Welcome to another edition of the Let's Be Frank Show. My name is Frank Mentone. I'm the publisher of the Totucket Times. And if you're a regular viewer of the show, you know that we try and keep the public informed on what's going on in our town. And tonight, we have a member of the Economic Development Commission and also a member of the Town Council. They're going to talk about what the Economic Development Commission is, what it does for the businesses in our town, and how they can hopefully help you if you need their help. My guests this evening are Dan Armin from the Town Council, and he is the liaison of the Council to the Development Commission.
Correct.
And Elizabeth Kaplan, who is on the Economic Development Commission. Welcome.
Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you.
And I guess we'll get started with, what does an Economic Development Commission do? And I'll ask the question, and you guys can figure out who's going to answer it.
Okay.
I like doing it that way.
From my standpoint, it works to forge new relationships with, between Town Hall and business and entrepreneurs. They work to think how they can best promote the town. I would start from there. What do you think?
Yeah, to dovetail into what Dan is saying, we really want the public to be aware of what our town has to offer via businesses. We have a great variety of businesses here. And we really, to open a dialogue with the town, create just an atmosphere of welcome. We want to be able to retain businesses. We want to attract new businesses. We want businesses to feel like they can expand in our community, whether it's in existing buildings or new buildings, so on and so forth. We want to conduct business events. We did have a business event this summer. We are going to have more of those, and I'll explain that a little bit more later. We've just formed an alliance with the Shoreline Chamber, which is an excellent organization for businesses to join to help with marketing and awareness. We, as far as as an entity, we have been able to go out and meet with business owners. We find out what their needs are, what their challenges are, and again, I'll expand on that a little bit more later. We want them to know we're here for them, not only from the Council's standpoint, but as a commission. We're a commission of five volunteer members, and we are working very hard to let businesses know we're here.
Okay. Now, who, okay, you have the Town Council. For many people that don't understand, and I usually don't understand that much either, that's why it's good that I ask the questions, because I don't know that much. You have your Town Council, and then the Economic Development Commission comes under the Council, and those people are appointed by the Town Council?
Yes, we're an advisory commission, so we are appointed through the various political parties. As I said, there's five members, and we have two alternates. We actually have two alternate positions open right now, and we do need more members. And the five members essentially come from a variety of backgrounds.
You can, yeah, why don't we name them and
Sure.
Tell us who does what, and so the people will know.
Sure. We have Jan Finch, who is our chair, and she, her background is in marketing. We have Chris Kranick, whose background is in business and real estate. We have Joan Tudor, who is also a real estate agent. We have Scott Small, who's an architect, and myself. I'm the member at large on the committee.
Okay. Now, what are the two, you said you had two openings for
Alternates?
Alternates. What are the two alternates, just in case a viewer wants to call somebody and say, hey, I might be interested in being an alternate? And who would they call?
Okay.
Like, if I want to be on the Economic Development Commission, who do I call to say, you know, the next time you have an opening, I'm the guy?
Okay, so it could go through a couple of different avenues. If you know one of the Economic Development Commission members, certainly you can call one of us. You can also call one of the chairs of the two parties, either Republican Chair or the Democratic Chair, or you can call the Town Manager. Any of those avenues will work if somebody is interested. Typically, with economic development, it is in our, it is in our town charter. Every member has to fall under a certain category. And in certain, in a certain sense, it makes, it makes good, it's a good way to do things because you get people from varied backgrounds, and that way, you can get people from the business community. You can get people from a development standpoint. You can get people from real estate. So you have varied backgrounds, so everybody brings something a little bit to the table. However, with the alternate positions, I am not quite sure exactly what category they would have to fall under. But again, if somebody is interested, please make the phone call, please, because we want to have full commissions, because it really helps to serve the town when we have a lot of good people together with good ideas.
Yeah, that is important, because I was on, I served on a couple of different commissions, and at the time, they weren't full. And to have a commission that's not full, you sort of tie in their hands, and people in the, in the public don't know that. They're just going, how come this commission never does anything? Well, sometimes, if you're short one person
They don't have a quorum.
One can't make a meeting, you don't have a quorum. So they had a month where they didn't do anything, because they were short, and they're not short because they're not trying. They're short because they can't get people to do it.
Correct.
So the people that are maybe complaining about things that aren't going right, maybe can raise their hand and say, well, if it's not going right, maybe I can give it a hand and help out. But, I mean, that's good. I know Joan Tudor. I worked with her when I was the worst real estate agent in the town. She was one of the better ones, so I do know Joan. Okay, what are, what are we doing now? For instance, what are we focusing on now? It's, you know, it's been, you've had this commission for years. I mean, you have different people on it.
Correct.
But what's the focus now?
Well, from the Town, Town side, we just started an tax assessment deferral program, which we now have two approved applicants. And that is when a business approaches the town with new ideas of expansion, if they can demonstrate that this expansion would result in a 35% increase in property value, the town will work with them to defer the incurred tax liability. So it's a staggered process over a number of five years, I believe. And that's a, you know, one way we can, you know, work from the Town side to encourage business to stay in town, expand in town, and come to town.
And from the economic development standpoint, I mentioned a little bit earlier about business visitation. So back in the spring, we divvied up the list of businesses that we had gotten from the tax assessor, and we visited different businesses on both ends of town. And, for example, Chris Kranick and I went to see Save and Discount, and we met with, you know, Sisto, and we talked about, you know, what are your needs? What are your challenges? And we met with him for quite a long time. We also met with Hope of J Cakes, and we kind of said the same things with her. And so you get a sense of what businesses are finding from the town, what the town is doing to help them. For example, what if somebody, a manufacturer, needed labor? We could help point that person in the right direction from a state standpoint, you know, what agencies at the state could help with labor? What, as, you know, now with the tax incentive program, you know, the town has this, we are aware of this. What are your, do you have signage issues? Are you planning on any expansion? How long have you been in town? So the business visitation has really allowed us to get one-on-one with different business owners, and just to really understand them, to know who we are. We're there to help them and to have a conduit between themselves and Town Hall. Another thing that we've done is we've become members of regional organizations, such as REX, which is Regional Economic Acceleration. It's an organization out of New Haven, part of New Haven Economic Development. And what they do is truly amazing. They help not only market businesses in the region, but they look at business trends. They do so many different offerings, and what they, they got us a, an intern over the summer, and he was very helpful in compiling a lot of information, data that we could now use to help businesses market and bring more businesses into town, know what's going on regionally. He went to meetings, things like that. We also have met with other economic development officers in North Haven, Guilford, and Branford, and know what they're doing. What are they doing well? There's a lot of expansion going on in those communities. And they have three economic development officers, paid officers, and what is it that is working for them? What's not working for them? How are they marketing themselves? And we thought, why reinvent the wheel when we know we have three successful communities around us? Another thing that we are doing is, we are working with various Town agencies. Mike Paulus has been a tremendous help to us. He comes to every meeting, keeps us apprised of what's happening with the Council, what's happening with P&amp;Z. The Town Planner has also been a tremendous asset. She's provided us with maps, and where are industrial zones, where are business zones, so we can get a large overview of what we have geographically and where we could possibly help businesses come into town, expand. As I said, we work with the tax assessor. We work with P&amp;Z. And it's just an organization and a commission that's open to helping the town in any way we can from an economic municipal standpoint.
Yeah, because some of these places, like, who develops, like, okay, I'm a resident of North Branford, and I want to open a, I don't know, I want to sell salads. That's my big goal in life, is to sell salads. No pun intended, yes. I do eat them occasionally. But now, who do I go, like, does the Economic Development Commission, who does like the study to say, well, you're never going to sell salads in North, is there a group that does that, that says, you know, this is, you know, this is okay, you're going to go, but salads in North Branford, we're pizza lovers, and we like steaks?
Well, REX, I know, and their shoreline, they do analysis on the demographics and what the needs and, needs are, what they have met, and what needs aren't being met in our region, and they could help somebody guide that.
So they would be able, if they called the Town Hall, which may flash any minute, because our, our director is tremendous, if they called the Town Hall, there we go, look at that. And they asked for Mr. Paulus, or somebody, and somebody would be able to put him in touch with this REX and help them with, with something like that.
Absolutely.
Because there's sometimes businesses come into town, and as a person who's been around the town a long time, you look at it, that guy's not going to last a month, and they don't. And you're going, you feel sorry for the guy, and like, who, where did he do his performa for that?
Right, right.
And maybe didn't, because just thought, hey, this is a good idea, moved right in, and didn't really have anybody sort of directing him to say, you know, you got a little bit of money, but you didn't set enough aside for this
Right.
Aside for that. But there are organizations that do that.
Yeah, we want to, we want to be able to give businesses as many options as possible for outreach and for assistance when it comes to that type of analysis, and making sure that somebody's going to provide a product that will be sustainable.
All right. And businesses that, you know, we see some of these, I know they're going over to Wall Field Study for the 85th time. I'm exaggerating, it's probably only 83.
I think, yeah.
You know, and every, every resident has their own opinion. So if you ask all the residents, you're going to get 60,000 opinions, 13,000, I think it is now. But, like, who, we've got, we've got some areas, strips that are blighted, there's dilapidated storefronts in there. So, you know, one of the suggestions I heard was put new businesses in the, in that Wall Field area, and it's like, okay, we've already got three or four that are pretty much empty. What, who, who sort of governs that? And some of these may not be in your jurisdiction. I'm just asking, so people maybe will know who's, maybe they're blaming you, and it may not even
So we only have a half hour for the show?
Yeah, right.
This, this could go on, this could be a filibuster, as far as I'm concerned.
We can do part two.
You're right. I can, I can tell you that, you know, there is a lot of blight in town, which, you know, is a challenge for both economic development and Town Council. I think what we need, though, is some sort of stimulus. And hopefully, you know, so you're talking about Wall Field, that's known as 1599 Foxon. That is under the town's control right now. The town does own that parcel, and we did, I personally worked on that project for probably five or six years. And things move slowly, but they progress. And we did do a Yale study, and a, what is called a charrette, where the public was involved.
Two.
Two of them, right.
Two of them, yeah. Now, I want to interrupt a minute, because I think I got this right. We did lose a good person on the Economic Development Commission when you were voting into the Town Council. Did you not serve on the Economic Development?
I was, I was on Economic
So you were actually the chairman at one point?
No, I was not, no.
No, not the chairman? Well, I got halfway story.
Well, yeah, well, that's pretty
And I stepped into Dan's
And you got, you got voted in as the Town Council, so one of the good things about that is we now have a person on the Town Council who is familiar with that commission for X amount of years. So go ahead, I just wanted the people to know that
Sure.
Your background is that you served on that
Sure, for quite some time. And, so we did have charrettes, you know, which was an opportunity to invite the public to share their opinions as to what we should do with that, you know, and the commission spent a lot of time analyzing the responses. We came out with really some good takeaways. And the takeaways were, you know, people want open space, but we need economic stimulus in the area. So I think we can find a happy medium, you know, a mixed-use type of a property where we could have some open space and have business working, working in conjunction with each other, afford people access to the trails behind that property. So I think that can happen. And Town Council's, you know, working on that right now, actually, what we're going to do next with the property.
And who's responsible for, now, I'm not going to mention the properties, but everybody in town knows what they are, for some of the developments that are a mess?
Yeah, it's hard.
Whoever owns the property just doesn't do anything with it, and it's hard, because you get new businesses in it, and, you know, some of them, you're driving over roads that are ruining your car and everything, and say, okay, I'm not going to that guy, and the guy opens a business, spends money, and, you know, are they getting promised that maybe they're going to fix this, or, I mean, who does?
Well, you know, blight is hard for everybody, you know, whether you're a homeowner and you have a foreclosed or dilapidated property next to your home, or the same is in business. And, you know, you have to wonder what the incentives are to keep a property blighted, you know? If you don't want to maintain and make your property competitive, then, you know, you could always sell to somebody that may be interested in doing that. It's, you know, we're trying to figure that out right now.
It's hard, because it's your property.
And, you know, again, from the Town Council side, we all see that. We all are trying to come up with some ideas that can give people incentive to do something with that, because it hurts everybody.
And if I could, you know, kind of jump on Dan's bandwagon here, a few things. First of all, with 1599, the Economic Development Commission, when Dan was on it, from beyond, we fully believe that that is a viable piece of property. We, we want it to be, whether it's sold or developed, whatever capacity for mixed use, like Dan said, we need tax dollars. There's just no if, ands, or buts about it. We have quite a few acres behind the police station and the new Wall Field that is deemed Town Property. It's beautiful space, I see it every day. And we, and unfortunately, in the sense of where that parcel is located, I can understand people from the North Branford end of town, having played on those fields and having much of a heartfelt, you know, affinity towards them, that the fact is, it is a town-owned piece of property, we don't have a ton of that. And even though if a for sale sign does go up, there are, there are guidelines in place in which we can have a large say in what goes there, how it goes there. And we feel, at the Economic Development Commission, this could really be a showcase for our community, and also have a domino effect with other, other plazas, such as you were speaking of. And some of those other plazas, I will tell you, the Town Planner, Carrie Dukes, has been in much conversation, as is Mike Paulus, with some of those property owners. And whether anything will come of it, we are not sure, but there is an addressing of that. We don't want the public to think it goes unnoticed. It's frustrating to us as well, because we believe we have a beautiful community, and we don't want people driving up Route 80
That's the first thing.
Seeing these matchsticky kind of, you know,
No cohesiveness.
Aesthetically unappealing places. And, you know, just, we used to have a facade program years ago, and not many people took advantage of that. And maybe that is something we need to look at again, as something to give business owners incentives to try to spruce up their properties. We need to have better signage, more consistent signage. And all of these things, you know, for the Economic Development Commission, we have, we are trying to take a multifaceted approach in how to, and then that is absolutely one of those things in our wheelhouse, that we are very cognizant of, as is the Council, as is the Town Manager and Town Planner. So, you know, it's definitely an issue, and we want people to come up 139, up 22, up Route 80, and, and look through our town like you can in a Guilford or a Madison, and, and just have it be this beautiful drive, because we do have this magnificent community.
I think it's important to mention that, you know, it's, it's possible to preserve our town's identity and character while promoting economic development
Yes.
In the right way.
Yes.
And, and develop some sort of cohesion where we do, people will know that they're driving through North Branford, or Northford, you know?
All right. I'm going to jump off, because I have a list of questions, and I probably missed half of them, because I sometimes go in a different direction. But one of the things you guys have done are, we're now affiliated with the, it's called the Shoreline Chamber of Commerce?
Yes, yes.
What's going on there? Because I was president of the Chamber of Commerce for a while, and I got to tell you, I struck out. I mean, I swing at a lot of pitches, but I didn't hit too many. I mean, it just didn't seem to work. But, so what, I mean, obviously, you have more to offer, because they have the three or four towns around.
Three, three towns.
Three towns. So maybe we can discuss that for a few minutes.
Well, you can take, I mean, I can just say that, you know, Town Council, it started with Town Council by appropriating the money to become members of both REX and the Shoreline. And, you know, it started with us, and then, you know, the economic development, they've taken it from there.
Right.
So you can take it from there.
So we, we have an incredibly wonderful relationship with the Shoreline Chamber. Ed Lazarus, who's the president, I've met with him on numerous occasions, as has Jan Finch, and Chris Kranick, one of our members, is now a sits with the board and goes to monthly meetings with them, and is really on the ground, running with them, as far as what they are able to do for our community. If anyone goes to the Shoreline Chamber website, it's incredibly rich in information about each town. They realize, so it's Guilford, it's Branford, and North Branford. And we joined at, at the beginning of this year, actually, maybe it was May. And it has provided, just in the information about our town, our identity, and we have really, it has kept the integrity of what we have to offer, because we are unique. All the three towns are unique. And they really try to capitalize on that. For example, before the Poco Fest, I met with somebody at the Chamber, Barbara, and we talked about some of the different events that happened throughout the year, and different spots where people could go for recreation. For example, the river there behind the, behind the police station, was it the Farmington? Is it the
I don't know the name of it, but I know
I apologize.
Oh, never.
Yeah, it's escaping me.
A couple of kids I know used to swim in there, which, you're not supposed to do that, so I don't
Okay, let's not talk about that.
Don't do that.
No, no, let's not talk
I didn't know there was a river back there
Yes, there is a little
Until they told me they went swimming in it.
Yes, yes, yes. But there's, you know, we have opportunities for hiking and recreation, and so any little nuance that our town has, they put up on their website, and it's growing. You know, anything, you know, all the beautiful farms that we have, all the produce that we sell, the stores, all of that. And it isn't really only about the membership. It's about identifying and keeping your identity. And they have just been tremendous. And I know the businesses that have become members have been very happy with the Chamber in all three towns. For example, in Branford, they, they run an event where it's like a lighting on the green, all the, all the stores, whether they're Chamber members or not, they have little lights that go along the sidewalks, and it's like a stroll, a holiday stroll, and it's fabulous. And, and obviously, we can't do something equal to that in that respect in our town, but we can do a lot of other things that highlight our businesses. And the Shoreline Chamber, they will offer you website development, they offer different business after-hours, they offer a nonprofit, if you're a nonprofit organization, they offer help with that, about marketing and networking, women in business. So they really offer a lot to their members.
They do tons of stuff, because I was, although I'm not a member, I was a member of the North Branford Chamber, and they used to send me as the chairman and the North Branford President, or whatever it was at the Chamber. They still have me on, excuse me, their email list, and they're, I'm getting emails five or six times a week about things that they're doing. Didn't they just do the dance, the Dancing With The Stars or something?
Oh, it's very possible.
Yeah, they did something. They asked me to be a judge, and I couldn't make, it may be coming up, but they, they do Dancing With The Stars, and the money they raise goes to help the businesses.
Oh, fantastic.
You know, we're, we're new on the North Branford end, so that's something that, you know, they probably have mastered, and we're just getting in on
Well, something they also did in the spring is, with Ted Kennedy's help, they did an economic development summit, and that was held at Stony Creek Brewery.
Right.
And it was, it was fascinating. Dan went, Mike Paulus went, and a few other Council members went. And what essentially it was, it was a few panel discussions with all businesses in the area, from, you know, Guilford and Branford, and actually beyond that, because people from, the people that own the company
All up and down the Shoreline, really, the whole region.
Oh, it was fabulous. And they talked about their challenges, and, and some of them were very highly accolating the state for things that the state is doing, and some of them were pounding the state, but the point was, you heard really raw information on what these businesses are doing to be successful, you know, whether it's development of new software, but all these little pockets, it was really amazing to me what we have in this really small area.
And events like that are fantastic, because it gives, you know, the people in, with some sort of control over this, you know, notes as to what is working
Right.
And then what isn't working, what we can do to address those.
And they're going to have a legislative, and again, this is in part sponsored by the North Bran, by the Shoreline Chamber, which North Branford will be part of, on their little letterhead, and they're going to do a Legislative Economic Development Summit. So you're going to have state legislators that represent our district there, and there's going to be some kind of discussion on labor, on energy, on transportation. And hopefully, that gets taken back to Hartford, and, you know, talked about what our needs are on the shoreline. And, and this in part is sponsored by the Shoreline Chamber. So it's, it's not just about business marketing, it's about using a regional approach to business development, and then there's a stay in age, that's what you really have to do, and that's what they do.
So there you have it. My director's telling me we got about two minutes left. So it goes by. Final thing that I missed, something that I might have missed there, or something that we didn't discuss that you might want to
I do have something. At this time, the North Branford does not have an economic development officer. And as I mentioned to you earlier, you know, both, we've met with North Bran, North Haven, Guilford, and Branford, and their economic development officers have paid for their salaries in spades by the businesses they've brought into those communities. And that is something that we are in the process of developing to bring to the Council in the very near future. And one of our members wrote up a terrific job description, and what that person would do for our community, they would be paying for themselves. And we
It's an investment.
It is an investment.
Yeah, it makes sense, because, you know, you said you met with some of these people, but you're doing it on your spare, spare time.
Correct.
And, you know, something that, if it's your job, you basically
Exactly.
You go back to your office, and you work on it right there, after you've spoken to this guy, instead of having to go back to your first job, and then maybe your second job, and then maybe get into it, you know?
And let's face it, you know, North Branford is in a competition with these other towns. I mean, if all the other regions, towns have paid staff to do that work, and we only have volunteers, we are at an immediate disadvantage.
Correct.
And that is one of the things that we have to address, one way or another.
All right. I'd like to thank you for coming this evening.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you for having us.
And we can do this again.
Let's do it.
The public doesn't know that it took us about six months, because there was all reasons why
We're all very busy.
We had to cancel and cancel. But now that we've gotten it, you know, maybe we can do this again, and then get it, get it moving a little bit. So, once again, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I thank our director, Mike Cummings.
Thank you.
Until next time, have fun, and call that number if you want to volunteer. We can always use your help.